Okay, are we good to go?
You are, you are. We have Amherst Media in the house with us. You have your quorum of the board. Um, my computer says six thirty-three. I think we're good to go, Mr. Colton.
Okay, well, welcome to the Amherst Planning Board meeting of August seventh, two thousand and four. My name is Bruce Colton, um, Chair and Vice Chair, uh, not immediately available this evening. And as the clerk of the Amherst Planning Board, I am calling this meeting to order at six thirty-three. Um, this meeting has been recorded and is available live stream via Amherst Media. Minutes are being taken pursuant to chapter twenty of the Acts of two twenty-one and extended by chapter two of Acts of two twenty-three. This planning board meeting, including public hearings, will be conducted by remote means using the Zoom platform. Zoom meeting link is accessible to the meeting agenda posted on the town's website calendar listing this, uh, listing for this meeting, or you can go to the planning board website webpage and click on the most recent agenda where the Zoom link is listed at the top of the page. No in-person attendance of the public is permitted. However, every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the meeting in real time via technological means. In the event we are unable to do so for reasons of economic hardship or despite best efforts, economic hardship, we will post an audio, uh, or video recording, transfer of our other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting on the town's website. Board members, uh, I take a roll call. When your name is called, unmute yourself, answer in the affirmative, uh, and return to mute mute. Um, Karen Winter.
Here.
Fred Hartwell.
I am here.
Doug Marshall.
President.
And, uh, we have apologies this evening from Jesse Major, Janet McGowan, and Karen Winter. Um, board members, if technical issues arise, we may need to pause to fix the problem and then continue the meeting. If the discussion needs to pause, it will be noted in the minutes. Please use the raised hand function to ask a question or make a comment. I will see your request and call on you to speak. After speaking, remember please to remute yourself to the general public. The general public comment item is reserved for public comment regarding items not on tonight's agenda. Please be aware that the board will not respond to comments during the public comment period. Public comment may also be heard at other times during the meeting when determined appropriate by the board chair. Please indicate that you wish to make a comment by clicking the raised hand button when the, uh, public comment is solicited. If you have joined the meeting, uh, the Zoom meeting using a telephone, please indicate that you wish to make a comment by pressing the star nine on your phone. When called on, please identify yourself by stating your full name, address, and put yourself back into mute when finished speaking. Uh, residents can express their views for up to three minutes or at the discretion of the board chair. If a speaker does not comply with these guidelines or exceeds there a lot of time, their participation may be discontinued from the meeting. Um, minutes, uh, I don't believe we have any minutes for review. Is that correct?
That is, we have minutes that have been completed, but they have, they weren't completed in time for this meeting.
Um, the second item on the agenda is, uh, public comment. Uh, whoops. Something funny happened to me there. Um, we have two members of the public, uh, attending, and it is the customer chair to read those, uh, in attendance. And, uh, we have James Polyop, Polly Lockop, uh, Polyogolopolis. Uh, I believe that might be the person from W A M C and Tom Reedy. Uh, those are the two persons in attendance. Uh, if either, uh, or Tom, I guess, will be part of the applicant's case. So I don't expect Tom to be making a public comment. James, if you wish to make a public comment at this stage, please indicate by raising your hand. I'm not seeing a hand raised. We have but two members. Um, so I think, uh, we will, uh, move on from the public comment period, uh, to the public, uh, hearings, the first of which is a site plan review. Um, it is six thirty-eight. Um, in accordance with the provisions, um, we are, we are going to open this, uh, this public hearing of the site plan review. In accordance with provisions of Mass General Laws, chapter forty-eight, this public hearing has been duly advertised and notice thereof has been posted, is being, uh, has been posted, and it is held for the purpose of providing the opportunity for interested citizens to be heard. Um, we are at six thirty-five, uh, we are past six thirty-five, so we can continue. SPR, uh, twenty twenty-four dash eleven, University Drive Amity LLC, University Drive at Amity Street, requesting a site plan review for approval under section three point three two five of the zoning bylaw to redevelop an existing commercial space into an eighty-five residential unit and commercial space, mixed-use development, including parking, landscape, lighting, and stormwater infrastructure. Um, uh, parcels thirteen B dash eighteen, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, fifty-four. Uh, those four parcels in the, uh, BL zoning district. Uh, board member disclosure, is any of, uh, the four attending board members have anything they wish to disclose in relation to this application? Seeing no hands. Um, at this point, I think we would call on the applicant, uh, to present, Pam, can you, I, um, it will be. Oh.
Mister, Mister Reedy has been brought over to the panelist.
I didn't, oh, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm looking at the, uh, he, he was gone from the attendees, but I didn't see him on my screen. I thought, Tom, you're in limbo.
He's there.
So just sit, sure, simply, Tom Reedy, turn the thick and Wilson out of Amherst here on behalf of U Drive Amity and its application, as the chairman noted. Uh, not providing any testimony tonight. We're just requesting a continuation to September eighteenth. I had provided an email to Ms. Brestrup. I want to say it was maybe Tuesday morning after the site visit. Um, and, and really, we want to take the opportunity to talk to the conservation agent. We got her comments. I've already talked to the engineer. They're all addressable. I frankly don't expect any plan changes, but we still want to at least give the courtesy to talk with Erin. Um, and we haven't submitted an NOI yet. We expect to do that probably the end of this month. We have all the information, the data sheets. You've seen the plan, stormwater report, et cetera. We just want to pull that together and again, talk to Erin about it and get it to her. And so understanding the board's not going to make any decision until they have some input from Concom. We just thought, you know, for that reason, and I know, you know, I see Doug's name, but I know he's not, um, watching this live. I know Jesse's not here and you're missing a couple of other board members. We just thought, let's just not give any testimony, uh, let's kick this over until September and let's have the first substantive hearing at that point. So, that's it.
Okay, so we have a date certain, sounds like, uh, you and Chris, uh, have discussed a date in September that we could, uh, move to, uh, move continuance to. Is that correct, Chris?
That is correct, yes.
And that date would be?
Mister Chair.
Um, Doug?
Yeah, I just want to correct, uh, the applicant that I am in attendance this evening.
Uh, I think he's, he noted your attendance, but that you weren't, uh, visually connected in some way. But anyway, Doug Marshall is attending, uh, as a board planning board member. We have a quorum. There are four of us. Uh, Chris, the date?
Yes, the date is September eighteenth, and I would suggest six thirty-five because that would be the first case on that night, night's agenda.
Uh, do I, um, I don't, well, do I have a motion to continue to that date at six thirty-five?
So.
Doug, I think Doug is moving, uh, I guess, uh, uh, Karen, do you want to second that? Since I'm looking for, yes. So we have a motion as seconded, uh, is there any discussion on the motion at this point from any, uh, Fred, somebody's hand up, Fred?
I am, uh, there we go. Uh, just curious, um, part of this process is going to involve combining four parcels, uh, into one, which is presumably under item seven on the agenda, the, I mean, uh, um, I'm sorry, item six on the agenda, A and R subdivision applications. Are we, uh, gonna be, in the interest of efficiency, gonna be doing those tonight?
No, there's no plan to do that tonight.
Yeah.
We, we haven't submitted the, uh, perimeter plan yet, Fred, but we will either as a condition of approval, uh, prior to receipt of a building permit or during the process.
Okay, thank you.
Um, there was a site visit, I should note, but I think we won't give a report on that site visit until, um, next time. There may indeed be another site visit, given the absence of, uh, some of the board members. Uh, so we'll hold that, uh, simply noting that there was a site visit, but no report will be given. Um, we're not taking public comments on this item, uh, as we would ordinarily do, uh, because we have not taken any testimony, so, uh, therefore they won't. It's inconsistent and improper to take public comment when we haven't had any testimony, but there will be plenty of time for that in September. Um, I think, uh, if there's any, Karen, you've got your hand up.
Oh. No.
Is that a legacy, Chris?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that we'll have a new planning board member joining, um, we hope.
Yes.
Either in August and, um, that I've checked with KP Law, and they said that it, as long as we don't take any testimony tonight, um, that that new panel member would be able to join the panel for this application. Um, and that would be a person who's taking Janet's, Janet McGowan's place.
Yes.
So I just wanted to let you know that.
Yes, but I, I, do I understand correctly that even if, uh, we did take testimony tonight, if the person, the new person was prepared, had certified that they had watched the recording, they could join the, uh, discussion and be a voting member?
That's not the case in this, in this instance, because that person is not a member of the planning board yet.
Oh. Interesting. Thank you. No, useful clarification. Uh, uh, do I see any other comments? Hands? I don't, uh, I think we're ready to, uh, take the vote on the motion to continue the meeting to, uh, September, I've forgotten the date.
September eighteenth.
September eighteenth, so six thirty-five. Moved by Doug, seconded by Karen. Um, I'll take a roll call, um, starting with you, Doug.
Um, aye.
Karen?
Aye.
And Fred?
Aye.
And I'm as, I'm an aye as well. So that's four of us. That's, uh, the unanimous of those present. Um, thank you, Tom. I think, uh, we'll see you in September.
See you in September. Thanks a lot.
If not before with some other, that's right, some other project or other that you may have in your, up your sleeve. Thank you. Goodbye.
Bye-bye.
Um, so, uh, old business, item number four on the agenda, uh, topic, topic's not reasonably anticipated, uh, in the forty-five, forty-eight hours prior. This is, uh, do we have anything, Chris?
We don't have anything as far as I know. Nate and, uh, Pam, is there anything?
No.
Okay.
Um, any, any board member? No, moving, uh, new business. Um, so there's an item of new business, the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission's Certificate of Assessment, uh, for this financial year. I think I've, uh, I think I've seen this, but only insofar as I'm a member of the, uh, the commission, uh, representing the town. Uh, this is the, Chris, I'm correct, this is the amount that all towns, uh, present, and that's prorated on the basis, I think, of population or maybe other things as well.
That's correct. And they always send us a letter to, um, to share with the planning board. It's addressed to Kimberly Mew, uh, the principal assessor.
Yes.
And then, um, the, uh, chair of the planning board always gets a copy. So we have been, uh, we have typically sent them to the planning board members, all the board members.
Yes.
And the assessment for this year is seven thousand three hundred forty-seven dollars and twenty-nine cents for Amherst. But this gives us a list of all the different towns and cities in the area and what they pay.
Hmm, yes, it's quite a spread. You can see that Covington's a hundred and fifty-five dollars, so, um, and someone, what's that, uh, Middlefield is seventy-two dollars. I, anyway, I, I looked at this and I thought, wow, that is a hell of a spread. I'm not sure what Springfield is. It's, uh, twenty-nine thousand, so. But this is just for our, uh, information. Is that correct? We are not required to take any action in regard to this, or am I wrong about that?
You do not need to take any action. It's just for your information.
Okay. Does any board member have any questions related to this, uh, presentation?
I actually have no idea what this is, what this money is for.
This is, uh, one of the, uh, revenue streams that supports the planning, uh, the Pioneer Valley, uh, Planning Corporation. The corporation is, uh, has member townships that are listed as municipalities in the left-hand column. There are many of them. Some of them are very small and some of them like Springfield are quite large. And there's a prorated assessment, and I'm not sure what the total is, Chris, if you can roll down. Um, it's, uh, this is a, uh, 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 part of, uh, the, uh, what the planning commission uses, needs to survive, sustain itself, but it gets revenues from various other sources, mostly from grants on the one hand or consulting, uh, because the number, uh, the members, the specialist, uh, staff of the commission, uh, are often, uh, um, paid, uh, do consulting work on, you know, through the commission. So it's part of the, uh, revenue stream that supports the commission. Fred?
Uh, yeah, I just was noting that, uh, with some interest that Northampton, the Northampton assess, assessment is a lot smaller than the Amherst assessment.
It is. Yes, it, it, it mixes around. It's, uh, uh, I'm not quite sure. Well, uh, I, 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 I'm speaking as the representative on the board. I, I confess that I'm not sure how that assessment is, is figured beyond prorating. If there's other, um, uh, uh, services that the commission provides Amherst that doesn't provide other towns. Chris, are you aware of, uh, some, uh, easy explanation as to why, uh, um, Northampton is significantly less than Amherst?
I don't know the reason for that. Um, I don't know. I mean, uh, we can apply for various technical assistance from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, but so can all of these other cities and towns. Um, we also hire them from time to time to do things for us, like they did the historic preservation plan update. Um, but I don't know any reason why our yearly assessment would be, um, so much more than Northampton. It's about, what is it, two thousand dollars more roughly?
I think so. So it's fifty percent more, or maybe forty percent.
And we have ten thousand more people than they do according to this.
Oh, okay.
So that might be part of it.
That would be certainly part of it. I think, Fred, that's probably a large part of the difference. Would you like me to, uh, uh, pursue this with the, uh, director?
Uh, no, that's, that, that's, I don't want to take any more time on this.
Yeah. Um, I mean, I, it's, it seems to be a, a robust organization. I've, uh, um, we, we, you, we've seen periodically the reports that they give us, annual reports of what they've done uh, in the course of the year and so forth. They seem to be well-led, uh, and, uh, quite active and, and, and it's a very large staff. Um, I think we're, we're fortunate to have them in our, in our region. Uh, Nate?
Yeah, I mean, every town's assessed the same rate. It's just based on population. So we're not, you know, we're not being charged more disproportionately. It's just, you know, our population based on the census is that much bigger than Northampton's.
Yeah, but, but, uh, really, uh, I mean, if we wanted to get into the weeds, that, that a good portion of that population isn't here for a, uh, um, a notable portion of the year, but I, I, I don't suppose we're gonna, anyone's gonna challenge the, uh, assessment. It's, it would take more time, more money than it would be worth to, to save a thousand dollars. Okay, seeing no more, I think we can move to the, the, any new business topics not reasonably, uh, anticipated? Chris, Nate?
No, no topics, no.
Form A, A and R subdivision applications?
We don't have one for tonight, but we have another, we have one coming for the twenty-first.
Okay. Um, upcoming, uh, SPP, SPR, um, S U B applications?
Um, we received a preliminary subdivision application for, um, property on Chutesbury Road. Because the applicant wants to freeze the zoning on property that is proposed for, um, solar development. So you'll be seeing that, I think, on the fourth of September. Um, it's a kind of perfunctory, um, process, um, in that they don't actually want to build a subdivision. they don't actually want to build a subdivision, but there's something in the state law that allows them to freeze the zoning on a property. In other words, they wouldn't have to abide by any new solar bylaw that came into effect, um, during the period that they are applying for permits. Um, so, you'll be seeing that, you've seen these before, um, I think Mister Robleski did one on, to his property on Main Street.
Uh huh.
So.
Um, so maybe Doug has, but the rest of us have, um, haven't been on the board, uh, when Robleski was around. Uh, Fred, you have a question, comment? Fred, you are muted.
Oh, sorry, I think you, I think you may have skipped over upcoming Z B A applications.
Oh, I did, I'm sorry, I, uh, um, yes, I didn't, I scrolled too far down. Uh, well, we'll get to that, well, we've, uh, so Chris has given us the, uh, an upcoming subdivision application, uh, probably the well, the, the September meeting anyway, whether that's the next meeting or not, we'll see. Um, and going back to upcoming Z B A applications, thank you, Fred.
Uh, the one that I am aware of but can't speak profoundly on is the fact that the comprehensive B permit. Um, the application has arrived and maybe Nate or Chris, if you want to say a few words on that?
Probably Nate would be the best person.
The compri, uh.
Yeah, the wayfinders.
The wayfinders, yeah, okay.
Yeah, they, they, they submitted their forty B application and a transmittal has gone out, um. You know, I'm assuming in September, October, the board could hear a presentation about that and provide comments to the Z B A, you had done so already um, a bit ago and they, you know, the architects changed the design around a bit in response to some of the comments from the board. Um, and so now it's, you know, going to the Z B A, the first hearing's August twenty-nine, it'll probably take, you know, four or five months or more to get through.
Okay. That's, that's upcoming, um. Questions or comments, do we, we don't need to make a decision about that at the moment because it's not actually here?
No, that's right.
Okay. Um, planning board liaison and board committee reports, um, I have nothing to report on the, on the planning commission, um. Uh, Doug, the C P A committee, do you have anything to report on that?
Right, I do not have anything new on that.
Okay. Karen, D R B?
Nope, nothing.
Chris, C R C?
Um, I'm continuing to meet with the C R C about the solar bylaw. Um, they're working their way through it and, um, hope to have a more refined draft to send to the town council.
I see Fred's hands, the question of Chris?
Yeah, a question for Chris, um, to what extent would this bylaw be affected by or not affected by the uh, stalemate in the legislature regarding uh, things like solar energy?
Well, this bylaw, um, is our, our own bylaw that covers large-scale solar installations, but generally speaking, we wouldn't have an installation that's large enough to really be very much affected by the state law, the only thing in the state law that might affect Amherst is that, um, they require, they are hoping to require that permitting um, happen within a twelve-month period, which is kind of a short period of time for some of these large projects, so, um, the state law has kind of two tiers of projects, anything twenty-five megawatts or over is going to be, they're proposing that it be handled by the state. Um, anything twenty-five megawatts or, or, excuse me, anything under twenty-five megawatts would be continue to be handled locally, but, um, there would be that timeframe where um, you could only spend twelve months on the review process, which to me, you know, if, given that you have to go to the Conservation Commission and the zoning board appeals, it just is, seems very short. Um, but in any event, nobody asked for my editorial, um.
And, uh, just to note that the, uh, the, uh, Pioneer Valley Planning, uh, Commissions had a number of presentations on this, some of which have circulated through to the staff and so forth, so if, uh, some of this stuff hits, uh, us, we have that organization's, uh, material is, is a resource for us as well. Um, report of chair, Doug, do you have a report?
I do not, Bruce, but I would like to thank you for standing in for me this evening.
My pleasure. Chris, reporter staff? Now, I guess there's one thing to report.
There is one thing to report, that I will be planning director until the twenty-seventh of September and then I'm going to be retiring. And, um, I've offered my services to the town to come back part-time after that, if they need me, they want me and need me. But, um, otherwise I'm going to be retired, so.
Well, congratulations, do, do we, uh, um, my wife asked me whether the town was, uh, has begun a search process for a replacement and I said I did not know the answer. Um, what's, that's, so that would be my question, uh, out of curiosity, uh.
I think Paul Buckelman is going to, uh, begin a search process. Um, but he has not begun one yet.
So, uh, can I ask perhaps, I mean, it's, uh, my answer to my wife was, well, you know, uh, we've got some, uh, competent people in, in the planning department and, uh, we've noted in town recently that, such as with the school, for example, that, uh, instead of going and looking for a new principal straight away, we had, uh, uh, two people who were co-principals, that was also true of the common school, and it gave people opportunities to develop leadership capabilities and so forth in the interim term, I guess, so I'm, I thought that maybe that's the, uh, plan that's in the town manager's mind and and, uh, I, I have to say, I, I, I was kind of vaguely, curiously supportive of such an idea, because I think it's, uh, except of course that means there's one fewer people, uh, uh, operating, um.
Well, we are looking for a planner to replace the planner who left in May.
Yeah.
And, um, so we still have that vacancy and then when I leave, there will be a vacancy.
Yeah.
I I could tell you where my heart lies, which is that, um, I hope that Nate Malloy has a very good shot at becoming planning director, I think he's really talented and smart and knows so much about the town, but, um, it will be a town manager decision, but I also wanted to say that the city of Northampton went out for a nationwide search and, um, they ended up hiring the person who had been there. And she's an excellent, um, planning director, Carolyn Mish, so they made the right choice there, so I hope that, um, Amherst also makes the right choice.
This was after Wayne.
That's right, yep, yep.
Okay, well, um. Keep, keep, keep visible, Nate.
Yep.
And, and, uh, if there's anything I can, uh, I mean, uh, we, we, the board will be, uh, try and be helpful and, and so forth, because we recognize that you're continually understaffed and, and now about to be even more soon. Um, I guess, uh, that's it, uh, um, nothing more to report from Star?
Can't think of anything right now.
Um. I guess, uh, um, I'll move adjournment, um, do we? I'm not sure whether we need, how do we do this, is, is that a second hand, uh, Karen? Yes, I always saw one voted by clicking the red button at the bottom of the screen, but that's what I'll be doing right now, um, thank you all and I look forward to seeing you again shortly.
Thank you, thank you.
Oh, we, we don't need to make a, it, it'll be our, um, let's see, we are on, this is an irregular meeting, this is a second, a second Wednesday, so.
This is the first, first Wednesday.
First Wednesday.
First Wednesday.
Yep.
Oh, right, yes, it's, yes, I beg your pardon, it's a, it's this uh, very seldom do I have my N A C F meeting the night after the planning board meeting, but in, in a month when which starts on, on Thursday, then that happens, that's why I'm confused. Thank you all, I'll see you maybe in two weeks, bye-bye.
Thank you, goodbye.
Okay.